City of Pelican Rapids Council Meeting, 11th February 2020 is now called to order. I ask if you have not signed in on the clipboard, if you would do so before you leave this evening, and if you have a cellphone, please put it on library. We'll call a member, Danielle?
Councilmember Steve Strand?
Here.
Councilmember Kevin Ballard? Councilmember Kurt Markgraf?
Here.
Councilmember Steve Foster?
Here.
Mayor Brad Fraser?
Here. Want to welcome each and every one of you here this evening in our council chambers, also those on Channel 14, which will be watching our council meeting on Wednesday evening. Just a couple announcements for the next couple of weeks. Well, today, 11th of February, Minnesota State Legislature convened in St. Paul. Monday, February 17th, as President's State, city hall offices will be closed that day. Tuesday, February 15th, is Minnesota Precinct Caucus Night at 7:00 PM. And we also have our council meeting at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, February 25th. So we meet from 5 till 6:00 PM only that evening. Any other announcements?
On February 24th is the annual township meeting for the fire departments. And that's at 7 o'clock down at the fire hall.
Could you repeat that date again?
Yep, February 24th.
Any other announcements? Hearing none, let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands my nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all.
Thank you. Citizens' comments, anyone here for citizens' comments? I'd just like to say, I'd like to recognize Lou Hoagland and the Pelican Press. Last week, there was a full-page article on the Pelican Press and the orgs they've received at the, what was the name of it, Minnesota Newspaper Association?
Annual Newspaper Convention.
Okay. And I've talked to many people in our community and outside our community who think that Pelican Press is one of the most fine local newspapers in the state of Minnesota, so thank you, Lou. Okay, item number three addition, agenda additions or deletions. I have one addition. Item number 17 is Pelican Rapids Ducks Unlimited Raffle. Item number 17 is Pelican Rapids Ducks Unlimited Raffle. Any other additions or deletions?
I move to adjourn with that addition.
Second. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same, motion carried. Item number four is approval of consent agenda, I'll read that. Item 4A is approval of minutes of the council meeting of January 28th, 2020. 4B is approval accounts payable listing. 4C is staff reports, as 4C1 is police chief report, and 4C2 is financial report. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same, motion carried. Item number five is library report. Councilman Ballard is not with us here this evening. Councilman Markgraf, do you have anything to report there?
Very little. We had one of the fastest library meetings in known history. We just didn't have anything to really discuss. Kevin did bring up discussing what the council talked about as far as rough color at the library was concerned. Chairman Runnegan noted that the new bookmobile is on schedule for an April delivery. That's part of the big library or services everywhere. Inventory has been complete at the library. And they did it a little different this year, they remained open during the inventory, which proved to be a big challenge, I understand. There was nobody present from the Friends organization, so nothing to report there. We're looking at doing, completing the backroom shelving project behind the offices there or the main offices there in the near future. And that was about our complete meeting.
Any questions for Councilman Markgraf? Okay, no questions, thank you. Let's jump down to item number nine, excuse me, yeah, tourism conference request. Deana Johnson is here with us this evening, Deana?
Deana Johnson, Otter Tail Lakes Country Association in the Pelican Rapids office. Thank you for letting me present today. I did put a sheet of paper on your spot. I am interested in going to the Explore Minnesota Tourism Conference. It's at the end of the month, this month. I believe that what I will learn for Pelican Rapids will, I mean, be able to be utilized to help grow our tourism. It's a incredible conference to network. And there's been a number of studies with partnership from the University of Minnesota that we're going to be getting some of those reports for. Some of our locals were some of the surveyors in that study, and it's a big, it's going to be a big section in Tuesday's day, getting those reports. And what we can do with that data, because I'm new to this industry, I mean, sort of, and I'd like to just learn more. The conference was $359. The deadline was actually last night, so I'm going to spill the beans here, I did register for it, and so I'm hoping that you will reimburse me for part, if not all, of that, and that is my request. So I really think this could be a huge benefit to Pelican Rapids. If you decide not to reimburse me, I will still go and you guys will benefit. So I'm hoping on good faith that you will. But, yeah, all of a sudden I realized the deadline was the night before the conference or council meeting, so. And that's all, do you have any questions?
Any questions for Deana, council?
Says I'm not staying at the resort.
I'm not staying, it's in Alexandria, so I'm just commuting. It's barely an hour from my house to the resort, so.
I'll move we funder for this conference.
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same, motion carried.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it. And I'll, I actually won't be here for the next council meeting because I'll be here. And then the following council meeting, I'm going to be actually on vacation. So the following one after that, I will come and give you a report on what I learned and what, maybe some ideas of what we can bring to Pelican Rapids. So, thank you very much.
Don't step away from the podium there yet. Let's put item number nine while you're still with us here. A 2020 Red River Valley Home and Garden Show. Danielle, did you want to talk about that?
Well, I was just going to let council know that after the last meeting, we had talked about looking into see if we could get a reimbursement or anything, and the answer was no. And so that's all I really have to share on that, is that we can't get any of our money back if we do not, if we choose not to go.
I contacted the swimming pool committee about them working that show and setting up this, you know, their stands, and they were interested, I have not heard that yet. I think Deana had some more suggestions.
So, I called up there also to also see if we could, if there was any way to transfer. There is a clause right in the contract that says you can't transfer like one entity to another. I hadn't even approached Otter Tail Lakes Country, but I said, well, maybe Otter Tail Lakes Country would pay for part of it so Pelican Rapids wouldn't lose the entirety of their funds. And no, there is no way to transfer. However, if it's a group within Pelican Rapids, whether it's the Friendship Festival, the Pool Committee, Pelican Fest, Art in the Park, I think what I'm planning on doing for the next two weeks, pretty hard, is I'm going to try and get some interest. I am actually on vacation right before the, right after the conference. And last year, I actually went on vacation during the home show, and I was, the stress level was a little high for me, so I don't want to commit to going to the home show. And I apologize for that scheduling, I should have looked ahead at that. But I think we can probably garner interest for at least a day, you know, to get our name out there for a day. I would recommend not bringing pelicans, not, you know, not going overboard with a lot of stuff, just, here's Pelican Rapids, this is what we have going on. On this date, we have this, on this date, we have that. Technically, booths are not supposed to be unmanned, however, I think, given what we know, we might be able to, you know, have it pseudo-manned, you know, I mean, have somebody that's willing to come, you know, for a little bit. And I don't think we're going to get anything more than maybe just a hand slap or something like that, but I don't think it's going to be a big issue. I think it's just, will probably be, you know, if you have a booth next year, which my understanding from my discussions with Brett, we probably won't next year, you know.
Maybe that will be our punishment, they won't ask us back.
Yeah. So, so that's, you know, I'm willing to do that for the next couple of weeks, just see, you know, it doesn't hurt anything at this point since we can't get our money back and we can't transfer it, so.
Deana and I will be in contact in the next couple of weeks, try to get roster together, who could work for both of the, the, the.
Fantastic idea, if the pool committee would have some type of a diorama or something, you know, a board of some kind.
Just even the board and, you know, because they've got the phone boards that are, they're pretty cool. It would be really nice to have something up there, you know, I don't want to, like I said, I don't want to put even the banners up too much. I was thinking of just having something printed out, just because if it's not manned, I don't want all of a sudden anything to be stolen, you know, that is worth value to Pelican Rapids, so. So, that's what I got.
Okay, so it's still in the making, but it doesn't happen yet. Okay, thank you. Let's go back up to item number six, street and park report. We have Superintendent Brian Olson with us here this evening, Brian?
Yes, thank you. Fairly quick report, actually. We only had to plow snow a couple times last month, which was kind of nice. We did spend a lot of time hauling, moving, piling snow from all over to try to make room for the next stuff that's still coming. Most of the snow that we hauled, we fortunate to have some Renner pit land that the city owns, so we're able to stockpile a bunch of it down there. I know it doesn't seem like it, trust me when I drive the streets, but we did scrape and tried to scrape and scrape the streets when it was nice and to make them a little less rough than what they are. But they're still rough, understand that. And then along with all that, just comes equipment maintenance and different things like that, that go bad when you're using heavy equipment, so. Park ends a bit. Skating rink continues to be busy this year, which is, I think I said last month, not surprising, it's a happy surprise, but for the past few years, it's been so slow there. And it's like, geez, is it really worth it? This year, this last month, we averaged about 18 people a day, kids, adults, whatever there were, in and out of there. And actually, one of the highest days that brought that number up was 96. And I'm not sure if the classes came up there and tallied themselves or what, but it was a busy day, so. And one of the things we will be looking at, to have had probably two or three requests this year, is putting two rinks up again, because there's more kids wanting to play hockey and this and that, and had some kids get hurt. So we will be looking at that next fall, when that comes around. The other thing, the only thing I'd like to ask permission for is the Minnesota DNR has an outdoor recreational grant that the park board and I would like to at least apply for. And it's a 50% match, and it has many areas of grants in it. One of the, one of the areas that caught my attention right away was the playground, to update playground equipment, which Peterson Park, I firmly believe, needs to be updated. And we did set some money aside for that in the 2020 budget. So if we could get, apply for this and get something to match that, it would increase and make it more user-friendly. We need to look at ADA stuff, we need to look at all-inclusive stuff when we do this, so. And then also, there's another part that I know the park board and Kate were really interested in, and that was trails. And it connects trails, not to build necessarily new trails, but to make connections of trails, sidewalks, whatever it is, so. Not saying we're going to get it, but I'd like to be able to apply, if that would be okay.
No, I move to apply, I mean, can't hurt to do that.
I'll second that.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same, motion carried.
Perfect, thank you. And that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Mayor, are you going to be here for my parking thing on the agenda?
I will stay for you, Steve.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Oh, motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same.
I got one question for Brian. We're into February. Next month, at this point, I'd like a.
Pool report.
Pool report on what your plan is to get this furnished, and I would like as much information as you can put into it.
I am working on that.
Okay.
From meeting prior, so yes, I am well aware. Thank you, though.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Item number seven is draft pigeon ordinance, which is included in your pack. There's actually four parts to that. There's a four-page handout, police regulations, this relates to the city of White Bear Lake, not us, this is White Bear Lake. Then there's three sample or draft ordinances that Attorney Larson has put together, and Attorney Larson, where can you speak at this point?
Thanks, Mayor, council. Before I begin, can I just add 30 seconds' worth of comments with regard to the Home and Garden Show, just to follow up on Deana's comments? I express some concern with regard to a bunch of pelicans being up there, and if there's not somebody there being present, you know, they could have a tendency to walk away or fly away, which pelicans typically do. From a personal standpoint, I believe her sincerity with regard to that. About three weeks ago, I have a pelican similar to the city's pelican in front of my office that was missing for three days, and who returned it to me but for Deana Johnson? So I really appreciate that, Deana. I think presumably, I don't know if it was the wind or what, but it flew down and it ended up in her space, so, thanks, Deana.
I can't take full credit, actually, we're, we're telling the queen, is everyone's calling it.
I just wanted to publicly, publicly appreciate Deana's willingness to return that pelican to me. So, I realize the packet seems a little big. There's three drafts that I prepared. Those drafts are, all of the drafts with the exception of the document that you'll have in front of you that has police regulations, that's from White Bear Lake. Now, I understand that, you'll notice it deals with chickens and pigeons and things like that, but the reason I brought that to the city's attention was I just simply looked for another city that's ever dealt with pigeons, specifically racing pigeons. And in the, in the draft ordinance that was presented to the council and reviewed at the council at the last meeting, it, the White Bear Lake code does incorporate much of that in there, but they also include several additional provisions that I thought may be helpful for the city in considering whether or not to include additional provisions. So, for example, if you, if you pull out the police regulations portion, the pages are numbered, and if you start on page 115, the numbers are on the bottom of the pages. If you look at subdivision four, the very, the very last sentence, pigeon lofts shall be located in the rear yard only and shall be at least 50 feet from adjacent habitable structures and five feet from all property lines. So I'm looking at that section G, and then there's sections I, J, M, O, P, Q on that page 116 that weren't included necessarily in the draft that was reviewed by the council last week. But based on the discussion of the council, I think some of those were relevant in light of some of the concerns, you know, as far as, you know, where would they be located? Would they be in the backyard only? And from my perspective, it just offered some insight as to how another city in Minnesota further regulated the racing pigeons, so.
What were those again, Greg, G?
So, I just highlighted for myself, G, and that deals with how far from property lines. I, J, J deals with the number of pigeons, I know that was specifically discussed. M, breeding wasn't discussed, I don't know if that's a concern. And then O dealt with specifically limiting it to specific residential zones, not all residential zones, because Pelican Rapids, of course, has four R residential zones. There's nothing in the draft code section from last meeting dealing with the disposition of dead birds. And then, that's letter P. And then subdivision Q talks about, you know, simply issuing a permit does not give them, you know, a permanent right to continue to do that if they ever violate it. Then there's a protocol for the city to follow when it says, hey, you've screwed up because you haven't followed regulation I or J, and therefore it's going to be suspended. And then there's perhaps a hearing that the pigeon owners would be able to attend to explain how they're going to correct or mitigate the problems, whether it be with regard to odor or noise or whatever comes with pigeons. I'm not a pigeon expert by any means, I have no idea, you know, as to what sort of concerns adjacent property owners would have in terms of noise or odor or things like that. But those are the ones that I highlighted when I was preparing for tonight's meeting that I thought would be helpful. And if you turn to the next page, page 117, all of subdivision B as well, are provisions that White Bear Lake included that would really go above and beyond the draft that was considered by the council at last council meeting. And that had more to do with, you know, design and the right of the city to inspect, you know, the pigeon lofts and things like that. So, I didn't bring that up because I wanted it to be more cumbersome, but in light of some of the discussion that took place, I thought it made sense to at least bring to the city's attention one city in Minnesota that has a pigeon ordinance. So, I don't know if any of you have had a chance to review the White Bear Lake provisions, and whether any of those provisions stuck out to you as being, hey, yeah, that makes sense to add that on to the ordinance that was reviewed at last council meeting or not. So, any thoughts or feedback with regard to the White Bear Lake's code in terms of utilizing some of those provisions or provisions similar to those into what the city reviewed at last council meeting?
Item number G, well, it goes to page 116, which is part of G. It says five feet from property lines, is it detached, ten trees?
For a detached like this, it's three.
Oh, three, okay, okay.
But you could keep five in there for this particular purpose.
And then, like residential zones, you know, I don't recall that specifically being discussed. Does that include R1, R2, R3, R4? What's the city's position on that, you know, because apartment buildings, of course, would be, what, R2?
R2. But there's also the, one of the provisions I was just looking at, that if you're in a rental situation, something from the property owner, written permission that he's allowing you to have them there too, is in this somewhere. That's probably not a bad idea either.
In the White Bear Lake version?
Yes.
Okay.
And it was one of the ones that you called out, it might have been the last page, but there's something about that.
I mean, I, it's my understanding the council has previously suspended its enforcement to whatever degree necessary to allow some current residents to continue to house their pigeons. I would encourage the council to, you know, just reflect on the White Bear Lake ordinance and take a bit of time to incorporate some of those, because the version prepared by the National Pigeon Racing Association, you know, that was prepared by, I believe, and Mayor, I know you got that, and it was very helpful, and you'll notice the White Bear Lake code incorporated many of those provisions, they just added additional stuff specific for their city regulation.
The White Bear Lake one, obviously, this is referring to pigeons and.
And chickens and bees.
Ignore the chicken part of it.
Yeah, ignore the chicken stuff, it was just, I didn't take the time to cross out all the chicken references, but I just wanted to give the city a second, a look at least at, as to what another Minnesota city's been doing.
Has anybody talked to White Bear Lake and see if they'd had any complaints with their ordinance, or complaints from, you know, somebody that lives next to a pigeon owner?
I did not speak to White Bear Lake.
I didn't know.
I just went on their website and pulled this off their city code.
I like, I like the provisions with the size of the coop, the number of birds, the number of hens, you know, I think that's all important. But as Greg stated, I'm no pigeon expert, I have no idea if they get wild at midnight, you know, and make noise, I don't have any idea, you know. I would doubt it, but I don't know.
Something in the pen, well, yeah.
Well, we do, we do have some feral cats that might be looking to get in, but.
You know, going through and looking at every one of the articles that you stated in the White Bear Lake ones, all of them, in my mind, made sense to have incorporated in here because there were things that you guys talked about, you just have to set the limits, like number of birds, et cetera. But especially the part about if you violate any of these, you know, your permit gets revoked, and then there's a process that you need to get it reinstated, because that's not in this one either, which there's something in the White Bear Lake regarding that too. So I think that's a good article. And then also, if they're, you know, if the council wants to add a fee to this permit, we don't have a permit form, we'll have to create a form, but do you want to just fill out the paper, the application, or whatever, get the permit without a fee structure to it?
You know, they also have a section about inspection, you know, and apparently, by reading it, I assume in the law enforcement one, they probably have an animal control department on their police department, but, you know, there would be no policing of it unless we had somebody go specifically like a rental inspection, like one time a year, every other year, go make sure they don't have 100 birds over there supposed to, or hadn't put a east wing on their coop, or, you know, kind of, you just never know.
Well, just to have that subdivision six right to entry for inspection, if you suspect something might be wrong, correct and go on and look at it, yeah.
That was one of the articles I thought would make sense.
I looked at all of this, and most of it I thought was pretty good. And I thought about, you know, how we should apply it or set it up. I like the idea of having a number on here, but I'd like to keep it as open to them, to the owners, as we can, which means M I would like to see taken out of there. If they're spending $1,000 on a bird, I mean, they probably want to breed it.
Take what else, Steve?
M, on page 116. But we would keep a number in there of 100 birds, or 50 birds, or.
Just the number.
So one suggestion would be, if there's a consensus that the majority of the provisions that we had discussed here from White Bear Lake seem to make sense, I could prepare a draft incorporating those and then have that presented to the council at the next meeting. That would be. That would be one suggestion. Or two meetings from now, whenever. Um, so I, if, if I could get a consensus, I mean, that's up to the council, of course, but I mean, that would be one option. Um, I'm not sure the council's sense of urgency in, in light of the current situation with the pigeons, but if, if there isn't that tremendous pressure and sense of urgency, um, then that's what I would suggest is I would incorporate those provisions. Uh, council member Foster had the concern with the breeding. Uh, how about the other council members with regard?
I'd agree with that also.
I don't know anything about this. But, Mayor, I like the idea. There's no urgency in my mind.
No, I don't.
But give more chance of feedback, yeah.
We want to get it behind. There's no state of urgency, I see.
Should I, is the consensus I remove the breeding provision, the prohibition of breeding?
I think so.
Okay. All right. And then, um...
And, and I don't know, I, I asked a little bit about that when, I don't remember the young lady's name, I was here talking for the group, but she had mentioned, you know, they don't do that because they have to ban them so soon and things like that and they have to be registered.
Oh, yeah.
So I don't think it would become a problem anyway. Maybe they'll want to advance to that, so should probably allow it.
How about, uh, residential zones? Is there any sort of limitations you want to put on certain residential zones not being allowed to?
You don't think, you don't think like single family dwelling or, I mean, I, I would hate to see them fill up the back of the, those downtown homes or the new apartments with chicken coops.
Yeah. The reason I bring it up is one of the provisions I had highlighted limited it to single and, um, White Bear Lake limited it to single, sing, single and two family residential properties only.
Like a duplex type of situation or?
Right.
Yeah, I agree with you on that.
What's, what's, what is that, Greg?
That's O.
O?
Yep, on page 116. So, you want me to keep that in there?
Yeah.
So that would limit, limit it to specific R zones. And then, um, and as far as rental goes, if they're renting a property, they'll have to have something written from the owner, saying that he, he's okay with them having pigeons at that property?
And, Mayor, like a duplex, would we ask that they get an okay from the people across next door?
That's one option.
Well, I mean, I don't know quite where we're headed with this.
You know, it's hard, even though we can keep narrowing the scope, that's, that's what we're trying to avoid, I think, but, cause then it would, then it'd say, well, how come if I live in this house and we're not attached, don't I have to get permission? Or the neighbor would say, why don't you need permission from us? You know, and I think as long as we would leave in there the nuisance part, if it should happen, and enforcement capability, the city, that might remedy that problem.
You know, there is a provision in there that you wanted to be incorporated that said if, cause the, the loft was to be 50 feet back from the habitable structure and if that, there was not that 50 feet opportunity from a backyard standpoint, for example, then consent would have to be obtained from the neighboring property owner. So let's say you only had 10 feet of backyard, you're not meeting that threshold of that 50 foot, and then that's a situation that would trigger the consent being required from the neighboring property owner.
That's going to be the case in every one of the trailer park lots then? Cause there's not a trailer park lot up there, if they've got 50 feet that they can keep a loft from their main dwelling.
Are those part of the families that currently?
Oh, really? In the trailer park?
Oh, I, I hold in the residential.
Yeah, cause there's going to be residential properties that they're not going to be able abide by that either.
Really?
And their neighbors might say no. And I would, I would encourage just thinking the city as a whole. I mean, I know there's specific individuals you're aware of that want to do it and you may know where they live and how it impacts them directly, but, um, I, uh, the last thing I wanted to mention, I, so if it's, if it's okay with the council, which I understand it is, I'll put together a draft incorporating the majority of the provisions we discussed with the exception of the breeding. Um, and then, I don't mean to be an advocate of the devil, but I'm here to be somewhat of a devil's advocate in terms of just reiterating my suggestion and encouragement to the council that right now pigeons aren't allowed in, in residential zones because fall are prohibited from being in residential zones. So, if, two years down the road, and I know it's if, but I mean, that's, that's how, you know, we think of precedents being set. Um, you know, there's racing chickens, I mean, I think there's ra, chicken racing federations, things like that. So the question would become, and this is, this is where my limitations on pigeons and how, how they impact the environment and neighboring property owners kind of hinders my understanding of their nuisance op, nuisance, uh, capabilities. But, um, just encourage the council to, to ask yourself the question as to, if somebody does ask us six months down the road if this is passed to house chickens and you don't want to allow them to house chickens, how are you going to be able to distinguish that decision in the event you do approve the pigeon ordinance? And we talked about that at last meeting. And I think that's important, just at a minimum to, you know, if there is some additional information and perhaps, you know, council member Mark Graff, you had brought up, you know, connecting with White Bear Lake and maybe that would be a good source of information to find out, you know, the impact that it's had on neighboring property owners and maybe there'd be some feedback to where it would be valuable for the city to say, look, you know, based on our research, you know, it's our understanding that the odor, uh, coming from pigeon manure, is that what it's, is all pigeon manure? Um, isn't as strong as other types of animals? You know, as silly as that might sound, uh, maybe it doesn't sound silly, but if it does, I really think that's important because there's a laundry list of animals that are prohibited from being within the city limits and pigeons is one of them. So if you allow pigeons, what's going to stop? Are there other animals that, that potentially you might see down the road that might have, might, that residents might want to be able to raise and raise for food or raise for racing or whatever might be the case? And if so, is the council willing to stay consistent with allowing those opportunities?
We don't know what that is at this point.
I don't have any irrefutable evidence other than what I read on the handout or that pigeon racing thing. Um, and I, you know, that particular breed or whatever it is of pigeon, they don't even lump it into this domestic pigeon family, uh, due to their inability to carry, you know, diseases and, and things like that. Or, or parasites or, uh, which completely sets them apart from a regular barn pigeon or?
Or a chicken.
Chicken or, you know?
And that's, those are the types, cause, you know, even if it's not in the ordinance, if those things could be discussed and then as part of the meeting minutes to distinguish that, because that by itself is a significant, uh, distinguishable characteristic that, that, um, relates to these types of pigeons versus your typical barn pigeon or a chicken or other animal that's currently prohibited. So, just thinking ahead in terms of?
No, I, I like those thoughts. Uh, but at the last meeting, we decided racing pigeons. That's, that's all we're dealing with right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a little scary, but.
So you'll put together a draft ordinance?
I'll draft ordinance and it's really going to look the same as the ordinance I've prepared with the exception of incorporating the White Bear Lake provisions that the council seemed to like and, um...
You'll present that at the first council meeting in March?
Sure.
Yeah, I've got, are you going to go on with these other articles you have in here? Because I've got some questions about some of this other stuff you have in here.
Uh, go ahead.
Okay. Under the first ordinance that you have in the packet, under, uh, part four, section 504.01?
Yeah.
Subdivision B. In, in the changes you're suggesting, in the first part of it, the first sentence of it, you actually state racing pigeons or sporting pigeons, but then in the second part of it, in the last sentence, you only say, or you say racing pigeons, fancy pigeons and sporting. Was it kinda just that you missed putting that other type of pigeon in there?
Yeah.
For, for the standpoint of being very clear for the enforcers of this ordinance, make sure that we state all three of those?
Absolutely. That was an omission, unintentional omission on my part. So I will double review that as well. Um, I did notice there's another situation where generically reversed, refers to, uh, I think just racing pigeons. So I will double check all of those, absolutely.
And then also in, in the actual ordinance, draft ordinance that you did too, there was, um, I think in 40, uh, 504.09 subdivision one and two states racing pigeons.
Yep.
And again, should all three of them be stated there?
Yes.
And then in, in 504.09 subdivision three down at the bottom, where you have the definition for animals?
Mm-hmm.
You have B there. It should be G. A, B, C, D, E, F, G, not F, B.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, you know, the language there, and I'm going to do that, Don, I, I absolutely agree with you on that. That's the language that was taken directly from the, the version that was previously provided.
And then in that one, state all three of the types of pigeons also in animals?
Yeah, no, so I will, I will just, uh, double check that any and all references made to the pigeon family include all three, all three varieties or however, or whatever they are.
And then, does, does council want a fee tied to this or not?
We don't have fee for other animals.
But any other permit we get, we typically do, but.
No dog license fee, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what's the difference? I mean, I, I don't care either way. I'm just saying we do have a fee for animals.
You said we do it for dogs?
Okay.
On licensing fee.
Who is that? Who has that? Case department have that?
My office has one.
Your office has?
Okay. I mean, I, I, you know, you're not going to have to buy a tag for a hundred pigeons, obviously. So, I mean, it doesn't make any difference to me, fee, no fee, doesn't matter. Uh, I'm just correcting the fact that we do in fact have a fee for animals.
It might be something you could put on the coop so, you know, it's going to be effective for that year. You gotta update it. I mean, that's, that's one way to keep track of it.
Well, if we're going to be reviewing the stuff submitted to give them a permit, that's what I was thinking, just to, something to, for the staff time on it, but it wouldn't be much.
No, no.
Half hour, 10 bucks.
Bad idea.
10 bucks, $10? If Greg could incorporate that in the draft.
10 bucks?
Going, going.
And that would be a one-time application fee or annual fee?
One time.
One time, $10 fee.
Anything else for Greg? If not, thank you.
Thanks, council.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Done.
One other thing, well, should we or should we not contact White Bear Lake and just find out if they've had any trouble or had to revoke any permits or?
That's a good idea.
Or should we just go into a void?
No, it's a good idea.
Well, based on the information that Greg is going to, based on the information that Greg is going to incorporate from White Bear Lake, why don't you just have Greg call White Bear Lake and, and then he'll, and have a better idea of what, how that should fit into our ordinance.
Fine by me if you would be so kind as to do that.
Yeah, I would, uh, I'll call the city administrator and, um...
They might say, they might not know what you're talking about, but at least we try.
I'll try to generate as much practical feedback as I can and then share that with the council at the, at the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next item number eight, parking. Uh, it's in the packet. Councilman Stan, did you want to address?
Yeah, Matt Stan, my nephew, he was very frustrated trying to get his freight in. And I realize it's a, an extreme winter, but, you know, if you look at that photo, if you had a chance, I think it's the second to the last one in the packet. Um, he called Jeff that morning and Jeff came down and helped. Apparently he contacted the owner of the truck and, but, I mean, if you looked, I mean, and my question was, is, I mean, that truck is parked roadway as far as I'm concerned.
I got the same picture from Matt that morning.
Oh, okay.
And I happen to know whose truck it was, but, and I've since spoke to him and said, what were you thinking? There's no lines there. You know, and, and clearly it's not packed with snow.
So what can be done to help him? I mean, these trucks are bigger. We took the bridge away, we added one that took away parking and, actually the apartments are lax a lot. There's no legal way for them to really access the back. Um, so I, I just, I need, I'd like to start the discussion. I don't like signs and I'd like to find out if Brian, there's overnight parking there and like that white car, some of those are parked right there overnight or longer.
I do know that occasionally at least, I've been able to ascertain that several of the vehicles parked up along the river.
Yep.
They are apartment people, uh, and they park there. Um, as far as the other ones, I don't know, other than perhaps there could be some overnight parking of, we'll call them leftovers from the DFW that have gotten their own rides home.
Okay. A little bit of that on, on times, we're right here, I can look at this and say three of those for sure and possibly a fourth are overnight, every night of the week.
I go along the, the snow alleys.
Some over there, um, down here, and it's always. And this isn't the only parking lot we struggle with in town with this issue. I want to, I want to make that clear and, and just because we fought with it every winter and it's, it's nothing here. It's, we have no way to get them to move out. There's nothing, to my knowledge, that there is a rule anywhere that says that they cannot park there forever. We can ask Jeff.
No, it's 24 hours, right?
Not in a parking lot, on a street.
I, I was digging through the ordinances too and even, even on the lake side, I took some time to see if I could find anything that addresses public parking lots. And we have stuff regarding streets, on the streets and alleys, but this is a public parking lot. You, you could even argue, is that drive lane there? Is it an alley or is it a street? You could say yes or no, but I was specifically looking for some regulations that specifically talked about public parking lots. And there's nothing.
And we have discussed it here, but nothing went past that.
Cause we're talking about, I don't know, van or something that just kinda stayed there and stayed there.
In downtown Broadway parking lot and it's still sometimes there or it changes now.
I thought we did something.
We were throwing the 48 hour continuous parking on that, but I don't know if, again, that's 48 hours on a street. We threw it at that just to see something happen, but I almost think that we, that we need to look at some, some way of putting something in here that addresses the situation of, of basically parking for extended periods in the public parking lots to whatever extent we can.
You know, here's, if you look through our, um, ordinance that we have now, subdivision six parking regulations and snow emergencies, okay? I'll tell you, it's sometimes new to me also, but there is no, I mean, this doesn't work. So we still have people on the street no matter what. So I don't know how we're going to get them out of a smaller parking lot when they all live there. You know, on a Friday or Saturday night, I agree with Kirk. You know, there may be some leftover Saturday morning or whatever, but this is every night because these people live down there.
Are apartments required to have off-street parking?
They, they do have off-street parking, I think, probably not enough.
That one does, but not the one down by the river does not have off-street parking.
Correct.
Correct, does not have.
Apartments at least down there, right?
Right. And that's, I can see that here. So.
Is that, you're talking about the Creamery Apartments?
They have ample off-street parking. Oh, well, no they don't, because they have too many vehicles there too, and that's some of these overflow here. But I can see down here, a couple, well, one.
I see the one for sure, too.
It lives down with no off-street parking.
Their apartment is on the lower level, right on Main Street.
Yep.
Yes, okay.
Yes. So what do you, you know?
And I know they used to walk across the bridge, some of them, I think this one in particular, and park on the other side, but, like, that bridge hasn't been cleaned, has it?
We did several times.
Really?
Maybe not now.
I won't get into that, but, I just, I mean, I don't, and I came on the council because I couldn't stand a parking sign, so I'm against signs, but.
But how do, how do we do things without signs? I get it. I get it.
Rules, yeah, but.
Honestly, this, this is stuff that has frustrated me for ten years, or more. Because what do we do?
So when, after a two-inch snowfall, you go, do you try to plow down there?
We get in there half the time, because there's so many vehicles in there to plow. That whole center, you see where that white car's parked?
Yeah.
That space has not been plowed, because there's hours of vehicle there when it snows.
Yeah, I've seen, some of those are continually overnight, yeah.
But how do, you know, I'm willing to work with anybody to clear this up, because then we'll move to the streets next, but.
Streets are fine.
I think I had seen something over in Fargo, because they were kinda having this type of an issue also, and what, I believe it was Fargo, but what they ended up doing was they put notices on every single one of the cars in the parking lot, saying, these vehicles all have to be gone between this time and this time on this date, because we were coming down to move snow. Anything that wasn't moved, they towed.
Yeah, there's a number of like, three hundred cars one day.
And they towed, and they towed, that was Broadway and Fargo.
So, so is that something that when we have a, a snow down in this parking lot, we basically let them know, everybody's gotta move their cars, so we can get in here and clean or clear the snow away? And in Matt's, in this picture, if that pickup wasn't there, Matt wouldn't have had a problem with his delivery?
It would've been tight.
Yeah.
But a good driver could've made it.
He'd have made it.
Yeah.
But doesn't, he could come down the other way also, where it's wider.
I don't have a picture of that part, but.
Well, if you think about how it comes down.
Yeah, I know, but depending on how people are parked that day, you know?
Yeah. We, obviously, the pickup in the picture is the problem.
And if there wasn't as much snow along the river, would, are them vehicles pushed out a little from, is the snow out?
Oh, yeah, they're out, they're out quite a ways though.
No, that would've pushed that line that way, but again, it's been a terrible snow year, and you can't get to there most of the time, because there's cars parked in front of there.
But again, I think if we flagged them, that we were going to clear that parking lot, you'd be able to get in there and move all that snow along the river, you'd have to haul it away, but it'd be part of the clearing of all that snow.
Pilot there.
Brian, when you, when you started working for the city, you did not see this problem, no? No. Because I recall when I used to plow.
Did not see this problem.
There wasn't a vehicle in a parking lot?
Eighteen years.
And now everybody owns two, three vehicles.
Right, that's the problem.
There's the biggest change.
There'll be two people living in an apartment and have four cars.
Yeah.
That is the biggest change I've seen, and the people on the move earlier, to go somewhere that they don't have to. But people are antsy nowadays. But yes, cars are multiplied, drive by any residential neighborhood, and you'll see two cars for every person.
But Brian, what would it take, where them cars are parked along the river, where all that snow is banked, from time to time, haul that snow out of there?
We have pushed that back several times there.
At some point, does it have to be hauled? And what would it take?
We're able to push it so far.
To me, it looks like it's.
It needs to be pushed again, but there's room to push it there.
There's plenty of room, we can always go higher.
But you just gotta get the cars out of the way to do it, right?
And like, like, there's a place in the ordinance that says, council can by resolution or whatever, give permission for Jeff, or myself, to say, you do this when you need to, clean them out, get it done, move them back in. And that, that should be on, on some of the streets also, that we need to widen out. It would help a lot if we could do that. And if they don't move, then I get a hold of the police department, they get towed.
Does Matt have a set schedule when those trucks come in?
I don't know.
Either Tuesday or Thursday at nine-thirty every week.
Yes.
That, that semi comes, right? But I don't remember it was Tuesday or Thursday. Do you remember if it was a Tuesday or Thursday you went there, Jeff? Tuesday at nine-thirty, I remember the time, but.
Brian, tell me again, if we have a two-inch snowfall, you don't have to leave a parking lot? Or what? How's that set up? You get off the streets, but what about a parking lot?
We don't have anything for a parking lot in our ordinance.
Okay.
We have discussed it over the years, but I don't know that ever went there.
Okay.
The easiest would be, is if we could have permission to say, okay, today at this time, everybody needs to be out, and if you're not out, you're being towed. And then we can go in and clean that, and we'll open up a lot of room on this side, the riverside, we'd be able to get these cleaned, so they can see the lines. There's a lot of, a lot of good that would come out of that, to be honest with you.
You say permission to, you know, is that something, Don, that this council can just say, we give you permission, or do we, we have to have that in writing somewhere?
In subdivision six, the last sentence, it says, the council may by resolution adopt other parking regulations that are deemed necessary to preserve the free flow of traffic, prevent accidents, or provide for the public safety or welfare. So.
This would qualify as that.
Well, that's what I think, too, you guys could do something of an ordinance, a resolution or ordinance, however, that establishes something to deal with these issues.
Certainly, you know, part where the lines are.
Yeah, I mean.
Oh, right.
Is there an ordinance that you have to use the lines? I mean, I'm talking about this pickup truck now, I mean. Just on streets?
Well, we could include that, if we're gonna do a resolution, in, park in the designated spots, if there's no designated spots, you can't park there.
But I would probably suggest, if you guys are gonna do a resolution by ordinance or whatever, saying, in public parking lots, you must be in the designated marked spots, then I think you need a sign that also says that in each one of the parking lots.
Is our doc going to follow that sometimes?
Well, at least, at least.
And you never know, you get, even in the heat of summer with smoldering pavement, you get people that take two spots, well, then you screw everybody up.
Right.
You know, so that kinda doesn't work.
Not that it'll help, but I am planning on probably reconfiguring this parking lot this spring, when we get time. And not that it's gonna change what we're talking about here, but I'd like to reconfigure it, so we could get less of this.
So, okay, like, hmm.
We'll think about that till spring.
So you'd involve the people affected then, and?
Just restripe it differently, is that what you're saying?
Yes, Matt and I have talked many times about it.
Yeah, I'm sure you have. But I mean, the pickup truck, that's a tow deal, and I don't like towing, but wow.
That's a tow deal. You gotta help, you gotta help people realize what they're doing, you gotta tow that.
That's terrible, so.
Jeff, so what would be the justification for calling a tow truck on that?
Or.
There's nothing that says you can't park there.
I'd say, isn't it, you know, I know, at least when I worked here, if we had something blatant like that, it kinda came down to if you knew the person and could contact them. If you didn't, you had no choice. But if you could contact them and have them move it, that, that would be better than towing.
That's what happened in this case, but, I mean, if somebody challenged it, though, and they said, what was your justification? Even though I was parked like that, there's nothing that says I can't park like that in a parking lot, what's your justification for that?
Impede the flow of traffic, period, and if they wanna take you to court, you win.
I'm just, I'm your advocate.
Yeah, but they would not win.
It would be better to have something specific that we could.
Because right now, you could park in front of the post office boxes here, right?
Well, that's on the street.
But right here?
Oh, right in this post office. Well, there's federal law against blocking a.
Well, how about in front of the door? So, so you need.
Sense, but.
Well, that's what this is, but.
But sometimes you have to help people with that. Sometimes.
Rare commodity these days.
So where are we going with this?
I'm not sure. I gave you what I, I would like you to do, but.
Yes, so we say, do you think we need some type of signage?
But then you need an ordinance, right? Saying that you have to park in the stripes.
Too. For years, for years, where the Mercantile is now, when that was the liquor store, there is, there was a sign as big as a railroad crossing sign on the back of there, not an entrance, not an exit.
Yeah.
All day long, cars in and out.
It's still there. Just for your information, and they still do.
But he's still doing it, so, signs, signs.
There's a one-hour parking sign on the wall, too.
Yep.
So Greg, some type of an ordinance, a resolution that says no parking outside of the striped areas, but also, you might wanna think about, especially like down in here, what does that mean by no parking? Because when there's loading and unloading going on, Matt's trucks are not in these striped areas, so kind of, I mean, I think it's, whatever, whatever you decide to do.
That's loading and unloading, yeah.
It's gonna have to have some unloading and loading.
They double park on Main Street to do that, nobody's griping about that, I don't think.
Right, but I'm just, I mean.
Right, they will, or could.
Put something in paper that says, you gotta park in these public parking areas in the designated striped spaces, you gotta address the loading and unloading aspects of it.
Yeah. Although the truck would be invited.
Yep.
Yeah.
We get it, but, and just the back end, except for loading and unloading. Jeff, could you address the microphone? We can't hear you over the phone.
And you could unload, you may be able to unload for a whole night, though, you know? Somebody could be moving in and parked there, so, there's no end to this.
Well, that's, that said, sometimes them trucks are there early and spend the night there, backed into that door. I've seen that.
I've seen where they'll unload in the middle of the night, and then park over by the river, over until morning.
You know, with the signage, you know, as far as signs go, I don't like signs either all the time, but in this case, I think in the parking lots, you know, if we had, because of the wintertime and the snow and ice and things like that, you know, you have a sign that says, park in the center of the, of the post, you know, so that people know where to park, it would help with keeping them kind of in a formal kind of a way and stuff like that, so. I think the sign is inside the, the parking lot would be good, so that people know where to park in the wintertime. We wouldn't have that all over the place, and cars parked, you know, taking up three or four spaces, but.
Jeff, what about snow removal in that lot, for example? What would you recommend?
As far as the, how to get it out, or?
How to, you know?
It's hard, you know, especially if you have signs there too, and stuff like that, that creates more of a problem for Brian, but at least the people would know that are staying there all the time, you know, that, okay, I'll need to park my vehicle here, so there's room for other vehicles that, you know, my neighbors and stuff like that, that park there. But as far as the snow goes, yeah, it's a, it's a Brian problem.
Don't you agree, though, Jeff, if we were able to close that parking lot, and give you twenty-four hours to be out of there, but you're not out of it, you're towed?
Yep.
And we can go in and clean that thing out, definitely can be done.
Yep.
What are you gonna do, though? For example, are you gonna do that at, in the middle of the night, when, when, say, the hardware's closed, hardware store's closed? Because.
Through the middle of the night, we could do it before eight o'clock. We could do it at eight o'clock, it's still a public parking lot.
Right, I'm just saying, if you, then you're, you don't wanna get into a situation where you're impeding, you know, commerce.
I understand, but there's still another entrance into that store.
I mean, before, you know, before we tow, you know, being the nice city that we are, we would, you know, try and call them, you know, make contact.
I agree with you, it would be, because I happen to move snow down there, too, and I have to wait, and a lot of the times, until I can find a spot, but, but that twenty-four hour notice is ample.
Yeah, okay, twenty-four hour notice, we're gonna do this. So how else, the thing we need is something, somebody that we can just have towed, instead of lollyganging around, because that just wastes everybody's time. Everybody's been notified.
And probably, they're only gonna get towed once.
Right.
Once they pay their impound fee, because, and I don't know how Pelican would do it, but I know in Fargo, when they tow your car, whoever the tow company is that's used, takes it to their impound yard, and then they pay when they go get their car to them, it's out of the city's hands completely.
Jeff, what about twenty-four hour parking in the parking lots? What, is that? Yeah? I mean, that's what the streets are now, right?
Forty-eight.
Oh, oh, okay.
In that breath, too, many of these cars that park there regularly, they're moving, at least once a day, they're going to work. Never, I don't think there's any, there was an abandoned vehicle at the Creamery for, it's gone now, which I'm shocked, but it was there for a year, never moved. But that was a private parking lot.
Yeah.
Down here, these cars do come and go, they do. Ninety percent of them.
Is this that one over there that doesn't technically move?
Right.
Um, Greg, would it be feasible, someplace in the ordinance here, to, to kinda state, when it comes to, for instance, when it comes to the public parking lots, they will be treated as streets? Just something that simple, so that.
City-owned lots.
Or anything else that applies to streets would also apply to parking lots. The plowing or removing snow after two inches would then apply to the parking lots, because they are treated as streets. Likes, you know, when it, when it comes to, just thinking out loud.
Seven oh one point oh one.
Greg, could you address the microphone?
Yes, Greg Larson. Yeah, you're just kinda looking for a, a general catch-all, where any reference to street or alley shall include a public parking lot, I think you could do that in seven oh one point oh one. In the definitions section, just by simply adding, in addition to that sentence, that in addition to the Minnesota statutes and the definitions, any sort of reference in this code to street or avenue shall also include public parking lots. Is that what you're getting at, Don?
Yeah, something to that effect.
You know, I did notice in, I was gonna mention in the section that we were all looking at, subdivision six. And what you're saying is probably an efficient way to do it, Don? Because I was looking at either section si, subdivision six of, on page three, chapter seven, and that talks about, you know, the, the notices being placed on vehicles, and it just relates to street or avenues, but to include public parking lots. Or subdivision seven, allowing any police officer or street department supervisor to remove a vehicle from a street or public parking lot, which isn't in there, but to add, or a public parking lot to another place for snow removal or street improvements, or if it obstructs anything with regard to loading, loading zone purposes. I mean, there's so many, you could tweak any one of these provisions and probably accomplish the goal, but big, long story short, right? The goal is to basically get the parking lots to be treated like city streets, is that correct? Then my suggestion would be similar along the lines of what Don mentioned, is to just add an additional provision to either the definitions section, which probably would make the most sense to include it there, that any and all references made to public avenues or streets or alleys shall also be interpreted and, and as including any public parking lot within the city. And that way, any and all references made in the code would, by default, include public parking lot, even though it's not specifically identified in every provision.
I didn't look specifically at subdivision seven impound, but that's what we're kinda talking about. The justification for. The justification for moving something like that, that's impeding, if you're just putting public parking lots in subdivision seven impound, might take care of it.
We got new news here from Brian Olson. Page two, uh, subdivision four. Towards the bottom of page two on chapter seven, general time limit. No vehicle or other personal property shall any vehicle or parklot are located on any street in any one place or upon any public parking lot or city-owned property for longer continuous period of 48 hours. So, I mean, that, that is the one reference to a public parking lot.
Forty-eight hours.
Yeah.
Short of chalking tires, how are you gonna ever prove that they didn't just go to work for six hours and come home and park back there again?
That's where I like the idea of something in subdivision seven impound, because it deals specifically with if it's impeding you removing snow, maintenance operations, et cetera. If it's in a public parking lot in that subdivision, you can have it removed.
I agree.
Yeah. If the goal is to just treat public parking lots like everything else, public right-of-ways, then I would suggest incorporating into the definitions section that any reference to street or avenue or alley shall also be interpreted to mean any public parking lot. And that's gonna cover any and all references in the city code that have those provisions.
Mayor. I think that's a good start. I mean, adding a description, "Have to park within the lines." I mean, yeah, okay. And we tried marking tires when I was a kid. That didn't go over too, didn't last very long.
No, I know.
Yeah, oh my gosh. And do you have anything else, Brian? Is that, that's a start.
I just wanted to be able to pull this down, mostly wanted to clean it up. Honestly...
So we didn't, did we cover that really, or we didn't?
Well, that would, that would fall under that, giving the discretion. Well, we'd have to add the 24-hour notice thing.
That would be...
That would be, that would be the minimum I would be happy with, you know, 24 hours.
But I think if you're giving, under subdivision seven, you don't, I don't know that you even have to put anything about it. If you're just being courteous enough to where you're basically taking the time to put, um, something on a car, warnings on a car, calling people, telling them, you know, give them 24 hours notice that we're gonna clear this parking lot. If it's not done, subdivision seven impound applies anyway.
Right, yeah. Yeah, but that's what I meant was just that it would have to state on there, 24 hours from, and then time written like you would on a parking ticket, that this ticket was put on that car or this warning. You know, 10:00 AM. By 10:00 AM tomorrow, this tow car's out of here if you didn't do it on your own.
Like Brian does with, uh, streets or parade or whatever, right? You put a, okay. I think that's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Everybody on the same page?
One follow-up question, Mayor. Are there any designated loading zones? Has the city ever designated a loading zone? I don't mean to bring that up as a new issue, but if the answer's no, that's all I need to know. I was just thinking of it.
I don't worry about any...
Okay.
Could you guys make that designation, too? And you have it?
Wherever closest to the door for the truck, probably.
You know, and with, with, with the public parking lot at the, uh, between the mercantile on Main and my office, you know, I don't know if you've ever noticed it, but there still remains a three-hour limit sign on there. So there is that parking lot that does contain it. I don't know if that's just on the south side of the parking lot, because the north side doesn't have it.
Yes.
I thought it was one hour. Was it three?
Three hours.
They had a three hours where the liquor store was there, so many people.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item number 11. Police union contract and cola. And Don sent a PowerPoint here.
Okay, what I'm gonna do, um, instead of, I could fill the packet with a bunch of stuff, and I thought it'd be easier just to put it on the PowerPoint, go over the, the, the union labor agreement, uh, and then just on the slides, I'll go through each one, showing you the change, and then, um, talk a little bit about what these changes would mean to, to the budget real quick, to, if you want to get that deep into it. And we can get deeper into it if you want to. But so, the mayor, councilman, Mark Craft, Chief Damon, and myself met two times, basically, with the union. And then I had a lot of follow-up discussions with the union, and then each one of them, as we went forward, to come up with this. So I'm gonna go through to each one of the areas where you're gonna see change. So I'm gonna go through this whole document first, and then you can answer some questions or decide what you guys want to do from that side. So the biggest, one of the biggest changes was, right at the table of contents, I'll start there, because Article 25 is a whole new addition as it relates to our healthcare savings plan. And we'll talk about it more when we get there, but it's a plan that the city's had in place forever. And one of the things that was pointed out to us was that when you have a healthcare savings plan or policy like the city has had, something needs to be in the union contract regarding that. So that's why that addition. There was some little, just minor things that I'm not even gonna stop and talk about as far as, as far as some of the typo corrections and that type of thing that were in here. So most of the contract pretty much stayed the same until we get down to Article 16, insurance. Okay. One of the biggest things that we kind of talked about was, um, insurance and the amount of, the amount of contribution that the city does for health insurance. And the city, for the longest time, has been $700, well, not the longest time, but it's been $700 a month applied to the employee's insurance. And one of the things that, that we, we talked about and looked at was in the areas of health insurance and also wages, where we stood in comparison to our other comparable cities, specifically Perm, Holly, Barnesville, Osakers, the ones that, the same comp cities that we use when we did our wage study. And so one of the things that we found in looking at them comps, because we've stayed at $700 a month for quite a while, we are, we were way behind what everybody else was providing. And if our goal, one of the things we talked about, and our goal is to try and establish wages and benefits in the police department to stop the revolving door the best that we can. And we think, you know, the union thinks that that's one of the main reasons we have a revolving door is because we're not competitive enough when it comes to wages and benefits. Now, we think that that might be a factor, to what extent, we don't know. But we think there's other factors that also could be used to explain why we're, we're revolving door for police, the police department specifically. So one of the things that we were looking at was the health insurance contribution. And, um, what we ended up with was for 20, for 2020, we would increase from $700 a month to $1,000. And then in 2021, we would actually go to, uh, $1,200 a month towards the insured, uh, the employee's coverages. The other thing that we, we looked at was the health save, healthcare save, uh, the health, health savings accounts, HSAs. The city does not contribute anything. It has never contributed anything to HSAs. All other cities do. Just to give you some idea, um, and I can, I can show you if you guys want to get there. But what we're talking about now, going from $700 to $1,000 or $1,200 in 2021, most of our comp cities, they're putting $2,000, $1,800, $2,400 in their employees' HSAs. So even going to, or, uh, uh, into the HSAs, but going to the $1,200 per month and, or $1,000 per month and $1,200 per month towards the health insurance that we contribute towards the premiums, the other cities are doing higher than that. They're doing $1,800, $1,500, whatever. So us jumping from $700 to $1,000 next year, then the, or this year, then the following year going to $1,200, still isn't getting where our competing, competing cities are, or comp cities are. But this is a good start in, in doing that. And then again, when I was talking about the HSAs, what we came up with was, if you're a, uh, on our single plan, the city would contribute $50 a month into an HSA for an employee that's on the single plan. If you're on a family plan, we would do $100 a month in a family plan. So obviously, the singles comes out to $600 annually, and the families would be $1,200 annually into their HSAs. And again, when I just mentioned, a lot of the other communities that were competing for employees and staff, where they're doing way more than $600 a year into their single, and the $1,200 for their family, they're doing $1,800, $2,400. It's, it's, it's really, really an eye-opener for us, yep.
Don, when you say we're less, you know, total package-wise, are we 5% less or 10%? You know, I know this is part of it, but...
Well...
Is it that?
You know, I, I didn't look at putting it into percentages, so to speak, but if you look at, you know, what, even taking the wages, because that's another component we're gonna look at. When, when we looked at the wages that our comp cities, again, are, are paying an hourly rate versus ours, we've basically fallen, fallen to where we were anywhere from a dollar to a $1.70 an hour less than what Perm and Barnesville and the other ones are paying. And so that's, that's one of the things we'll be looking at. So in a nutshell, you know, what we were looking at for 2020 is a 4% wage increase, and then in 2021, a 3%. But on top of that, we haven't been applying, we haven't been putting much into the health benefit side of things. And so, um, when you look, I didn't, again, I didn't look at it as a part of, as percentages, so to speak. But I, in some sense, I did, but you'll see that in a, in a second. So again, going to $1,000, $1,200, and then starting to put something in the HSAs. They also were asking for an accelerated, um, you know, accelerated schedule for vacation hours, which we said we're not gonna do. We're not gonna look at that. We talked about the sick leave, and, uh, one of the things that the council did early on was basically approved adding grandparents to eligible, uh, family members, immediate family members. One of the things that we also agreed to was adding the word step parent, which isn't gonna be a big deal. Uh, I don't think that's gonna be, come up where you have, actually are taking sick time for a step parent. But it also makes sense. What we kind of thought was, we already had parents in there. And when you think of parents, a step parent is a parent. But, um, the fact that ours already said step, or children and step, or children and stepchildren, they just wanted, okay, let's add step parent along with parents or parents-in-law. So we didn't see that as a big deal, so we just, we did that. The other thing that was changed when, when it comes to the sick leave is, is the, um, and it relates to that healthcare savings account. And this is kind of one of the first things that we ended up doing, is, uh, our, our previous contract just said, "At least 10 years of continuous service who retire with accrued unused sick leave." This also said retirement date. And then this down here wasn't even there. It just said, said compensation will be paid out. And they didn't want, when they, when they separate from the city, they didn't want their, um, any unused sick time. If they meet this criteria, they didn't want that paid out to them. They wanted it put into a healthcare savings account. That's what kind of got us talking about having, getting language in here. When I, when I, when I talk about the, the healthcare savings account as it relates to this, it's not the HSAs. And I've been, I was talking with and communicating with the Minnesota, um, Minnesota... What the heck is that called? MSRS.
Yeah, that's all I know it as.
Minnesota System Retirement. Anyway, they're the ones that control the, uh, the, uh, the retirement funds. They're not necessarily para, but they're, they're part of para. So anyway, they're, they're the ones that helped me kind of put together, this is what we should have in our union contract as it relates to the healthcare savings account. So instead of having retirement here, we put separation from city service. And the reason is because we always had this language in here that said, "You have to have 10 years of continuous service, and you have to have 90% of your eligible amount of sick leave in order to even get paid out or get this benefit." So if you're here for between, after 10 years, between 10 and 11 years, if you have 90% of your total max of 480, which is 432, then the city takes 30% of those, whatever hours you have, they take 30% of them hours, and they take, and, and they take those hours times your pay rate at the time, and they will basically put that money into the healthcare savings plan account that's established for that employee. And then that employee can take and use that for health expenses when they retire. So because there was the situation, and it was kind of, was a little bit confusing to, and MSRS, too, you're gonna have employees that basically work for the city 10 years and then leave city service with this criteria, but they're not retiring. They're just leaving service. And so it was a little bit confusing. So they said, "You basically wanna just, just, you know, years refers to retirement, but you really wanna look at separating from the city services." And it makes sense that the city employee is working for the city 10 years. And this is general. This is what our actual policy outside of the union contract kind of talked about, too, which we'll take a look at a bit later. But if you've got somebody that's worked for the city 10 years, and they've gotten this kind of sick leave accrual, they've been working. They haven't been taking sick time off, and we've been benefiting from that because they're here, they're being productive. So if they, if they're working 10 years and then they leave, separate from the city, they probably deserve to take and have some of that money put into a, a post-retirement healthcare savings account. We've got to benefit them from not using all that sick time, which is a cost to the city every time. And we have had and do have employees, well, I shouldn't say do have employees, we have had employees that they don't accrue more than 10 hours, and they use it right away. When they're gone, they take sick time, we pay it. So these employees have been a benefit to the city because we don't have to pay it. They're not taking their sick time. So for them to get 30% of it makes sense. So here's the, the new language that was put in place. And essentially, what this says is that we will establish a post, post-retirement healthcare savings account for each employee with Minnesota State Retirement System. That's what it's called. The funds will be deposited in the employee's account to be used following separation from city service. The employer will not contribute fund, uh, any, we won't contribute any of the funds to it. It's what money that we owe them because of, that's what the second one says. Anything that they have that comes from, the severance pay from Article 12, which is comp time overtime, Article 18, which is vacation, and Article 19.9, which is sick leave, which is the one we were just looking at. So in a sense, what this says, if you leave the city employment, we're gonna figure out if you are owed any sick leave dollars, and then any vacation dollars and any comp time that you haven't used when you leave or overtime, we're gonna compute that all up, and we're gonna put it into a healthcare savings account. And then this is basically just the change that was made to the, this contract effective January 1, 2022, December 31 of 2021. So when it comes to the wages, 2020 was a 4% cola. 2021 was a 3% cola, which changes the scale. So in 2020, the, the top of the scale for patrol officer is 27.13, and then in 2021, it goes to 27.95. And I'll have a little bit more on that in a second. The other thing we did, Pelican Rapids, for I bet you, while 15 years that I know of, Kurt or, or Jeff, you guys might know how, we're back beyond that, the night differential for nighttime officers has always been 65 cents. So I'm guessing it's been like that for 20 years, maybe more.
I don't know that they had any differential before that, honestly.
Yeah, yeah.
I was, I was here when they came up with that, the union.
And that was way before my time, yeah. So we have seen that other cities typically are either a dollar, or there are cities out there that are $1.50 for night differential. And so they were asking for, I believe they were asking... differential. And so, they were asking for, I believe they were asking for a dollar fifty, and we ended up settling at a dollar, which, it just is a thirty-five cent an hour increase in, in what it means for the police department in night wages. And then, the part-time high end goes to twenty-four ninety-three this year and twenty-five sixty-eight next year. So, let me pull this up, and kind of put it all into perspective a little bit, I hope. So, this is kind of, it's just a bunch of junk, or dead on here, but I'll see if I can make sense of it for you. So, basically, wages, health insurance, HSA. And I've got PD, non-PD, and then kind of what it means for all of them. I'll kind of explain it, because one of the things we're going to be looking at, that Daniel and I are expecting from you guys, is a decision on the union contract, and a decision on what everybody else is going to get, as far as COLAs, et cetera. So, as far as the PD goes in wages, in twenty twenty, the increase to the wages for the police department is zero dollars, because in the twenty twenty budget, we kind of figured a four percent increase, because we didn't know where it was going to land. Just so happens, that was where we ended up landing, was four percent. The reason four percent was because, again, I mentioned earlier, we were from a dollar to a dollar seventy below what our comp cities were paying non-COLA wages. In twenty twenty-one, the PD wage increase of three percent would add seven thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars a year to the budget. Now, that's based on what we kind of typically have, as far as number of hours, total hours that police officers work. And in the current wages, that's just, again, stating that currently, we're a dollar to more than a dollar an hour less than our comps were. And then the night differential too, currently, we're at sixty-five cents where we're going, we're proposing, we're going to go up thirty-five cents. From the non-PD, again, twenty twenty wages would be no increase, because we figured four percent. And then, in twenty twenty-one, the increase would be nine thousand five hundred dollars to everybody else other than PD. So, basically, the justification or the notes here, when I looked at the various budgets, all these, all these, all these things we're talking about outside of police are not just covered by the general budget, they're also covered by water, sewer, liquor store, library, in the case that the library is affected by all this. And that's a decision for the library board to ultimately make. So, one of the things that I looked at, at the last, past few budgets, as a whole, our budget revenues have always, have been exceeding our expenses. So, when you look at, are we going to pay for this? Well, really, from the things that ring the budget last year, the numbers that were in the budget last year that we didn't spend. And obviously, it's always nice to not spend those, but we're able to do what we, what we would like to do, partly because of that. So, the total twenty twenty addition to the general fund wages for PD and non-PD is just twenty-five hundred dollars, that's the night differential. So, increasing the night differential to a dollar from sixty-five cents is going to add about twenty-five hundred dollars. That's it. And the, the four percent COLA, again, we already had figured that, so that's not additional. In twenty twenty-one, the addition to the general fund alone wages, both of them, is sixteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars in twenty twenty-one, which amounts to a point eight, six percent increase, based on the twenty twenty budget that the council already approved. So, really, we just need an additional sixteen, sixteen thousand eight hundred, point eight-six percent. Again, if you looked at what we did spend last year in the general budget, I think it was probably about seventy-four thousand dollars. That did not get spent because of whatever reason. When you look at the health insurance, in twenty twenty-seven, or twenty twenty, in the police department, it adds five hundred and thirty-six dollars a month, or six five hundred dollars a year, for the, for the people on our, in the police department right now that are on our health insurance. In twenty twenty-one, it adds just an additional two hundred dollars over the twenty twenty number, for another twenty-four hundred dollars a year. And then, included in the police department's budget is the chief's and ten percent of the accounting clerk, because she does some, some assistive work for the police department. Non-PD in twenty twenty, it adds, with the, with the increase to a thousand dollars, applied towards, that the city pays towards the employee's premiums, we go to sixteen eighty-nine added a month, or twenty thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And then, in twenty twenty-one, the additional over the twenty twenty adds another seven thousand dollars to it. So, again, you look at, that's just not paid for by the general fund, that's paid for by water, sewer, however our, you know, breakdowns are for employees, other than the PD obviously comes from the general fund. So, one of the things that the union brought up too, which you can kind of look at it this way, is because we have only been paying seven hundred dollars a month, and we have paid that for, you know, several years, we've saved by not increasing. So, that's where they get this past, past year savings, due to not being at these levels. Yeah, yeah, that's, you can look at it from that standpoint. So, totally, in twenty twenty, the addition to the general fund for health insurance, both PD and non-PD, is twenty-six thousand seven oh four, which, based on the twenty twenty budget amount, is a one point three percent addition to the budget. And then, in twenty twenty-one, you add another seventy-three sixty, which would be another point four seven percent. So, over the two-year period, about one point eight percent increases to the budget that you had set in twenty twenty, to, to cover this cost. And then, I just noted, the library does not have an increase. And the reason the library does not have an increase in either, in either the wages or the health insurance, is because the two library board, or library members right now are single coverage, they don't have families, and their premiums are below the seven hundred dollars that we currently pay. So, re-increasing it to a thousand does not change anything to the library. For the HSAs, to put the fifty dollars a month for a single plan, and the hundred dollars a month for a family plan, adds about thirty-seven hundred dollars a year for the police department. And again, that somewhat includes the chief and a portion of the accounting clerks. And then, for the non-PD, it adds about ninety-five hundred dollars a year to everybody else. And again, it's covered by more than just the general fund. One of the things getting up, that we did get them to agree to was, the putting, funding money into the HSAs does not happen until twenty twenty-one. So, so nothing HSA-related happens in twenty twenty. So, that was, that was, they were willing to, to take that, and we kind of explained it as, in order to basically ease into the budget, because of this other stuff that we're trying to do. Not doing the HSAs until twenty twenty-one helps us ease into that twenty-one budget, and it also gives us time to plan for the added expense. One of the things I'll point out is, in twenty twenty-one, our special levy that we do every year, we have a fourteen thousand dollar decrease in our special levy in twenty twenty-one, which kind of will help offset this to some extent, which is a six point seven seven percent drop in our special levy going into twenty twenty-one. So, overall, the added cost to the city funds in twenty twenty-one is twelve thousand dollars to fund these HSAs. The library, if the library board agrees with doing this also, is going to add, it's going to add twelve hundred dollars to the library's budget, because those two employees are on the single plan, and they would each get six hundred dollars a year if they go into an HSA. Any questions on this stuff? One of the things that I, I kind of wanted to show as it relates to the wages, so this is our comp cities that we used during the study. This is our comp, comp cities. In twenty twenty, all of these settled at this percentage. In Pelican Rapids, of course, we were negotiating, but at four percent, with a four percent, I showed you that our full-time officers are going to twenty-seven thirteen. These other cities, which we were falling behind on, this is what they've settled at already, and this is their wage. So, in twenty twenty, at a four percent increase, we now step ahead of Albany, who did a five percent, and we step ahead of Osakers, who did two, two point seven five. That's the rest of these cities, because of what they gave in cost of living adjustments, we don't even catch them at four percent. It helps. So, in twenty twenty-one, the cities that have settled, if we do a three percent, that gets us to twenty-seven ninety-five, ninety-four, Ron and you're here. And we look at what Perm and Pequot Lakes and Holly have already done, we're jumping up in twenty twenty-one to twenty-seven ninety-four. Perm's already at almost twenty-nine, Holly's over twenty-nine, and that's at us doing a four percent or a three percent. So, you know, we're moving in the right direction. These cities also, if you think about the other benefit, the health, HSA contributions, the health insurance contribution they do on top of these wages, you know, we're still behind, but this is going to be one big step forward, and I think one needed step forward, if we're trying to basically be competitive with, especially the cities nearby us, like the Barnesvilles, the Hollies, and the, and the Perm. So, you know, as far as the twenty twenty budget, we do know that this all kind of adds something to the budget, but we've got the funds to do it. You can look at the reserve funds, you can look at what we didn't spend in the twenty nineteen budget, and this basically goes a long ways for helping us. The one thing I can't, I didn't look into, but if we're this far behind, and I was trying to think of, why did we fall after just doing that wage study in twenty-
Because here's what happened. We gave like a two percent, and the other cities gave a three percent. Or we gave a three percent, and they gave a four percent. So, when we did that wage study, we increased everything, we got up into the middle of the pack, and then we didn't stay with the pack, because they increased faster than we did.
That's exactly what happened. And that's why we fell behind. So, if we did that in the police department, I know the same thing, the same effect has happened in the rest of the employee groups also. We've fallen basically behind, because they were given three, three, and we were given two. And in fact, when we gave two, or three percent in twenty seventeen, we did it, to ease into the study, we did one and a half percent for six months, and one and a half percent, another one and a half percent the follow, the, the last six months of the year. So, that basically even put us further behind right, right off the get-go, because they did three, like from the beginning of the year in twenty seventeen, or a lot of them. So, that's kind of how we got there so quickly, but, but this gets us going in the right direction. Any questions? So, if there's no questions, and the council is in favor, then I need approval to approve the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one union contract?
What else?
And the HSA, and, or is that, that's part of the contract?
That's part of the union, it's all in the union contract. The things, the things that I showed you in the union contract, that was all in yellow, were the only changes to the contract. So, I want to start with the union contract first.
I'll move the approval of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one union contract for the police.
I'll second.
Here we have a motion, second, discussion, discussion?
Steve's got a question.
That's a new union, right? We're dealing with?
Correct.
So, is that same, or how's that go?
Um, as far as working with them, I think, LALS is, is much, much larger than Local Forty-Nine was, much, much larger. They represent, I think, the majority of the, the police departments, or a good number of them in the state, and not just the state, I think they might be national. Yeah, that's, it's basically law enforcement, legal services is what LALS stands for. So, I think, they, their, their business rep that they have assigned to Pelican, I think he's, he has a lot more knowledge and experiences in dealing with contracts. And so, I think that's why some of the things that we were talking about and looking at, that wasn't brought up in the past, was because of the experiences and what this individual has seen in other contracts that LALS has. He was good to work with, for the most part. I did, you know, he understood where the city was coming from, you know, tried to help us understand their position and why they were looking at things. But I didn't even cover a lot of the things that, that they were talking about, that they would like to also have, that we flat out, no, that's a management right, we're not going to do that, that type of thing.
And we just, we stressed to them, like we did with Local Forty-Nine, you know, you got to come with this information in June, or August, when we're setting our budget, don't come with it after our budget was already been set.
That, I think, that I think is, it's huge, but that's a problem union-wide.
Yeah, I know.
And he understood that, he agrees.
And we, we had promises from Local Forty-Nine, they were going to do this, but it never happened. So, hopefully, this will happen.
Mayor, I'm curious to, Mark, or Kurt, if you could tell me, what was your reaction?
I, you know, I was actually kind of impressed with the rep. What I mean by that is, when we would counter their proposals, and we would explain, you know, this budget is already set, we, we don't have nearly the latitude we could have, if this was prior to negotiations, and, and he understood that. And I believe the police department understood it when he, when him and Tom would take it back to them. You know, they were, they were fair, I felt.
Yeah. Any other more, any more discussion?
Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same?
Motion carried.
And, you know, the other part of this too, is obviously, all the other employees too, you know, expecting and hoping for some type of a cost of living adjustment, and we traditionally have done the same thing to the rest of the employees to keep it fair. So, I would, now, outside of the twenty twenty-one cost of living adjustment, we know what the contract says. So, we won't be talking about the twenty twenty-one COLA until the end of the year, but as far as the rest of it, look at council approval to do the same thing for the rest of the employees. Four percent, increase the cost of the health insurance contribution to a thousand.
Go move.
I'll second that.
Discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same? Motion carried. Anything more of that, Don?
No.
Okay, then we'll go to item, item number twelve, healthcare savings plan policy change.
How far is that?
In your packet.
Sorry, sorry. Yeah, in your packet, and up on the screen is what's in your packet. This is actually the city's healthcare savings plan policy, and this was actually put into place in two thousand and four. You see my names at the bottom of it, because this is just the draft, if you can see the draft down there, but this is the draft of what the, what the policy change to the city policy would be. I already did have Minnesota State Retirement Systems review this, and, and they're fine with it. So, the only thing we're changing in our policy is this termination, because in the past, it just said, after retirement of public service. And down here, it was sick leave policy at the time of retirement, that's all it said. So, we're being, we're making it more specific, that it's termination of public service, not retirement, and we're saying separation from city employment, not retirement. And that follows what's in the personnel policy or in the, the union contract. And it makes it a lot clearer. And that was one of the things that, in talking with MSRS, they'd said, well, yours kind of alludes to retirement, but you have this ten years of, of, of continuous service. Well, you have people that leave after ten years that don't retire. So, it was a little bit kind of confusing even for them, how we were applying. And so, for, because of practice, and to clarify how we're going to, what, what this policy is supposed to mean, that's why these changes, not makes it clear, you don't have to retire, but if you give us ten years of continuous service, we're going to put money into that, that healthcare savings plan. And they still have to meet the criteria, they still have to be ninety percent, ten years- They still have to be 90%, 10 years, 10 years of continuous service and their, their health ins, their savings, excuse me, their unused sick leave still has to be 90% whether or not going to meet the criteria.
Was there a motion to accept this?
I'll move the acceptance of the healthcare savings plan policy changes.
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion? Discussion?
Termination seems like such a harsh term.
Yeah. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same? Motion carried. Okay, let's go down to 17. Pelican Rapids, that's Unlimited Raffle at VFW Post 5252, which is going to be held on March 27, 2020.
And not so much the raffle, it's just a typical banquet gaming permission from the city to have the game.
And we approved them every year in the past.
Does that peasants?
I move to approve.
Second. Motion second, discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same? Motion carried. Item number 13, planning commission appointment consideration. Don?
Yes, you know, the intent was to, to put an ad in the paper and, and see if we could get, generate some applications, and Lou, thank you Lou, just put something in the paper. I know he was looking for something from me, but it wasn't something that I was thinking was going to, I was going to throw in the paper and get things going. It was a kind of a work in process, try and get it, when we talked about it the last, at the other council meeting, try and get something in in the next couple of weeks or whatever. Well, Lou put that thing in the paper right away, and then we got an application. So I put it on the agenda because obviously the planning commission's got some stuff they want to get going on and we're trying to get them working on. And I thought, instead of getting something more in the paper, I would just throw this at council and see if you're interested in just adding this individual, and then we've got a full planning commission. So the individual that dropped the application off, his name is John McMillan, and John presently doesn't live in the city, but he owns a lot in the city, and in the merrier future, he plans on building on that, on that lot a home. So what John kind of put in his, I'm going to kind of summarize what he put in his, why I would like to be on the planning commission. He's lived in this area for 50 years, but mostly in the township, and he's been on township boards and stuff, and, but he does own a lot in the city in which he hopes to build on soon. He just feels that he wants to give back to Pelican for all the good years he's had here. So that's kind of what he put down. When I talked to him on the phone, you know, I explained to him some of the things that the planning commission is, is looking at, what the planning commission does, the need for, you know, in the future, you know, with the development of the Northwest, the, the comp plan and what it takes to, to do an updated comp plan, everything else. And, and he's very willing to do all that and be a part of it and is kind of excited about it. So if the council's fine with adding him, you can do that tonight, and then the planning commission's full again, or if you want to consider others, and I'm sure there'll be other opportunities, but.
Is there a motion to appoint John McMillan to the planning commission?
I'll move.
Second. Motion second. Discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same? Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you. Item number 14 is mayor report, just a few items in the past month. January 29th, I had conversations with the mayor of Pelican Rapids Library. On February 3rd, here at City Hall, I attended a Pelican Rapids Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan Community Advisory Committee meeting. And the next meeting will be held in April, date hasn't been determined at this point. I've been working with the park board and an individual outsider community to install a memorial bench in Sharon Park, and I've hands that over to the park boards who are working on that. February 6th, I met with Administrator Sova at Otter Tail Power Company regarding the street lighting throughout the city of Pelican Rapids, and that's going to be the main item and focus at our next city council meeting at the end of February. Then yesterday, I met with Administrator Sova regarding tonight's city council meeting. Any questions? Item number 15, city administrator, Paul Don.
That's, that's the last council meeting. Again, we held department head meetings, also working with Danielle to set the agenda and prepare for this meeting. This meeting's been kind of a lot, a lot of extra preparation because of the union stuff and whatnot. But one of the things that, that we talked about at the last council meeting, I believe it was, was about potential rebates for the library roof, depending on the color. So I did have a conversation with Otter Tail Power, and they do have a rebate program, and it's kind of tied not so much to the color, but by the R values and the efficiency ratings of the difference between the existing roof structure and material and the, the roof structure, material you put on there. So, so what they're looking for is, and I, and I forwarded this information to Brian, I tried to see if we, if I could find anything real quick that would help the library committee kind of start moving down that path to get this information, but they, they need existing our, our values on our existing roofs and the materials that they're, that they're wanting to put on there. And then Otter Tail Power can take that information, and they're actually willing to come up and take a look at the library project also, and if the library committee would like them to. And then they can kind of help try and put together with them R ratings and efficiency ratings and put together somewhat of a number of what a rebate would look like. So it's definitely worth pursuing, and like I said, I tried to find something real quick based on our plans from the, from the library when it was done, but it's going to take a little bit more of a consultant or maybe even Scott would be able to look at these things and be able to, to get the stuff off them that they would need. So Brian's got the information, I sent it to him, and I believe Wayne, no, is Wayne on the committee? Yeah, CC Wayne and Brian, I believe, so they could start looking into it. We had a couple of computer issues, programming issues with Excel and also expedited the police department's program. And so IT guys are kind of hard to come by sometimes, and so I spent some time, a couple of afternoons or days, basically trying to figure out and was able to figure out what the issues were, why we had printing problems and why the officers couldn't even get into the expediter. And I was able to figure that out on my own, so we didn't need to wait for any IT. And then again, I alluded to the fact that with the LALS contracts and discussions we've been having, I had to have some contact with the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Labor Attorneys regarding some of the things we were talking about with the contract to finally get a finalized agreement. I met with this individual concerning interest in the planning commission. I met with Otter, the Otter Tail County Engineers and Apex Engineering regarding the Casa 96 and 100 project that we're going to be doing this year, just to kind of make sure that the county is on the same page with, with what we're going to try and accomplish with our infrastructure also. You know, they're obviously involved in just the street part of it. We've got the infrastructure and the mains underneath the street on, on West Mill and then up to the bridge, but we're also, part of that project is going to be going back a little bit towards the elevator with water sewer mains underneath that, which isn't underneath a street at all. It's underneath a, well, it's the gravel back there. One of the things that I have talked to city attorney Greg Larson is, is to find out if we have access or road easements over those areas that we have water and sewer mains under. I cannot find if the city has easements, so the city attorney is looking into that because we need to get easements in place for this infrastructure if we don't have them. So, so we wanted to make sure that the county was also aware of what areas that we're going to be doing, some project work that's outside of theirs, plus talking to them in regard, in regards to some of the areas that they have right of way, or we question where they have right of way and stuff like that too. So just to make sure that we're all moving in the right direction as, as the project develops. I participated in a conference call with Mayor Fraser, Councilman Foster, MESRB, Coalition as it relates to the International Red River Board and Total Phosphorus and Total Nitrogen. That was an interesting conversation, and I think the council will probably hear more about that as things move forward. But basically, what that whole conference call had to do with was there's an effort by the IRRB, and I imagine it's still the IRRB, International Red River Board or whatever up in Canada. Apparently, there's a lot of phosphorus and nitrogen getting up into Canada from the Ven River, and, and they're looking into this. And so the IRRB is talking with the MPCA, and how this all relates to us is we put nitrogen and phosphorus from our plant into the Pelican River, which goes to the, to the Otter Tail River, which goes to the Red River, which goes to Canada. And so, so through the discussions with the IRRB and the MPCA, there is concern by all the, the river cities that the MPCA is going to come down on these cities with some standards that are going to create potentially another huge potential project and cost to these cities in trying to meet the total nitrogen and total phosphorus limits. While total phosphorus we're already setting at and have done, that was our last, or, or 2010 project, $7 million project, but the nitrogen levels, if they put levels in our permit, that might create another drive towards another big expensive project.
The International Red River Board. Board is trying to go beyond what EPA limits are. So if the limits, EPA limits are say 5, they're trying to go down to 0.5 or some.
Yeah, for total nitrogen right now, they're suggesting, you know, that, they said that 5 to 10 range. Our total nitrogen, we looked into it, our total nitrogen right now ranges 20 plus. So we would have to cut ours in half if they set it at 10. Well, they want to go lower than that. So we'll see where all this goes, but we have the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities and the MESRB organization that are basically questioning this, they're, they're having discussions with them, trying to, you know, see where this is all going to land. So you'll, you'll be hearing more about it because it could have an effect on our, our treatment system, depending on how it all works out. As Brett mentioned, we met with Otter Tail Power regarding streetlights on a couple different directions. One was our streetlights, which you'll hear about the next meeting, and another avenue, the streetlights that we keep having issues with. And so, you know, we've kind of kept on them about some of our lights that keeps going out, number one. I, I will mention, the lights we're having problems with are not Otter Tail Power lights, they're city-owned lights. And so they, they understand that they still are, we have a maintenance, maintenance agreement with them, and they want to make sure all our lights are working, but the ones we have are having problems with are our lights. So if it's not a bulb issue and they have, the one in particular that we keep looking at or, or talking about recently is the, the first one down south of Faith Church on the, on the east side of the road, kind of along the path, it almost looks like they're supposed to light the path, but the poles, the lights, fixtures are on the other side, kind of street side. But the first one in that line, and they've replaced the bulb in it a few times, and Steve keeps reporting that intermittently, he sees it out, and we had three individuals trying to find it, you know, look at it the other day, and all three of them said, it seems to be working.
I'll send a picture, Don.
Yeah, well, when that one goes out, the other ones in that string stay on, right?
Yeah, I'll take a picture when I go home now.
Good, yeah, great. Well, it'll be on now.
Yeah.
Anyway, so, so, so that light happens to be a city-owned, and they're going to, they're still looking at it. And if it turns out that it's not a bulb issue because they've replaced the bulb and it comes, they're going to have to replace the fixture, the city's going to have to find the fixture for them to replace the fixture because it's our, it's our light, not theirs. So there's, there's a system of lights in the city that are our lights. The decorative light ones, obviously, the pedestal-shaped ones, but there are other city streetlights that are ours, not theirs. So just kind of a four, four thing is, is for the next meeting, we're going to be talking about Otter Tail Power taking lights. No. Yes. And then I met with the chief and statem on some police department stuff. I went down with Bob at Apex and gave a presentation on our transportation alternative application for the Complete Streets 2024 project. And then I spent some time trying to research something on parking lots.
Thanks, I have one question. Your calendar is different than mine. And your newsletter, Don? Am I really off base or have I got the wrong calendar? The dates? Like, start. Yeah, what, so are you on last year or what?
I don't know, Daniel.
So then I stopped reading after that far.
Yeah.
No, well, that's.
That's our newsletter.
You were supposed to read this first.
Is that correct? Is that deep?
Adjourn.
So move.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same? Meeting adjourned.